All right, thank you all for being here this evening. It is the regular meeting of the Terre Haute City Council, about 6:05 on Thursday, October 5th. We begin each meeting with a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. This evening, councilperson Loudermilk will lead us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Michelle, if we could get roll call.
Councilperson Oller.
Present.
Councilperson Azar.
Here.
Councilperson Bowland.
Present.
Councilperson Crossen.
Councilperson DeBon.
Here.
Councilperson Elliott.
Here.
Councilperson Garrison.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
Here.
Councilperson Nation.
Here.
Seven are present, two are absent.
And, and for the record, councilperson Crossen is, she called me, she's not here, she's ill, and councilman, why am I drawing blank?
Garrison.
Councilman Garrison is out of town. But I was made aware today that in, in his 15 years, I think this is the first vote he's going to be missing. I thought that was pretty impressive.
That's what I wrote it.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's pretty impressive. At this time, we have 30 minutes dedicated to public comments on items that are not on the agenda this evening. If you would like to step up to the podium for public comments, we ask for your name and address. It's not required, but we do request it. And if you could try and keep your comments to around three minutes, we would appreciate it. So at this time, if anybody would like to address us during public comment, you may now come up to the podium.
Good evening. My name is Mark Smith. I live at the corner of 19th and Buckeye. For the last, I've lived there for over 20 years, and over the last three years, I've seen a factory tore down by two different demolition companies. Two fires, at least one of them was arson, and multiple trash scrapers running through the property there. Millstone dumping millings in that property, and my property taxes gone up every year for the last three years. Now, I live across the street from a dump now. It's not safe, they put a fence up, the fence is tore down now. I'd like to know what the city plans to do about this. There's 60 some acres that's going to waste, and like I said, it's a dump, and everybody's property is just demolished from that area. But yet, like I said, property taxes keep going up.
Mayor, would you like to?
Sure, absolutely, that'd be fine.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else?
Hello, my name is Shakabhar Dacharia, and I have a couple of questions. I'm trying to understand the process of applying for ARPA funding because we have two needs for rethink, actually, for the community. One is for the truck, these are all very small requests, and the other one is to convert our mowing spaces into bee-friendly, pollinator-friendly spaces. And to that, I also wanted to see if the city council, city mayor would think about, we have a lot of, you know, sidewalks, and by the sidewalks, all these strips of grass that need mowing, and it takes a lot of money and creates a lot of pollution. So I've been studying that all over the world, there are a lot of examples, and there are a few places in the U.S., there is in Colorado, California, where those side, the strips by the sidewalks are being converted into pollinator-friendly, permanently flowered spaces. So that eliminates the need for mowing and regular maintenance and creates a better ecosystem for our wildlife. So I was hearing in the other meeting the other day that there are ARPA funding that needs to be, you know, decided how to spend, so I would like to, you know, request you considering something like that, to use funding to create, you know, our city which would look prettier, flowers instead of grass, and it would eventually save a lot of money. But going back to my previous question, I just want to know how to apply for ARPA funding.
Mayor, is that something you'd also like to tackle when you're up there? Okay. Are you able to stick around for a little while?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address us during public comment time? Okay. If not, I will close public comments and we will move on. Michelle, corrections to the journal?
There are none.
Communication from the mayor?
There is one.
Mr. President, members of the council, we'll address this concern. I'm gonna have to give you the really short version right now because it's complicated, as you can imagine, a lot of legal pieces to this. The company that owns that site, obviously, is out of business. They have no money, per se. They hired a company to do demolition work up there and knocked everything down. That person that did that work recycled all the bricks that they could pull out of there, so it was part of the deal that they struck with them. It is a situation that our city attorney's been working on, we continue to have conversations, Marcus Maurer, city engineer, we've been, I mean, it's a constant conversation regarding that site. We have a quote to clean it up, it's $1.2 million. It's not our site to clean up. We could ticket them, they're not gonna do it because they have no money. We're trying to decide the best approach, whether we condemn it, and then we go ahead and spend $1.2 million of taxpayer money to clean the site up, and then, you know, obviously, it could go back to the owner, clean, which wouldn't be a good scenario. So we've also applied for some grants to get EPA or IDM to assist us with that, but that's not a typical cleanup since it's not a contaminated site, per se. There's some asbestos in some of the material, but there's no contamination that we're aware of. So right now, we are waiting on lawyers to continue to work through this, and then we'll decide whether we go through the condemnation process, which could be the next step, and then we can tear it down and put a $1.2 million lien on a piece of property that has an owner that really doesn't have any interest in that property. So that's the latest I can tell you. We work on this, I mean, I'm asking for updates every two or three days, but nothing has changed recently since that demolition company pulled out and they're done with what they're, they worked out a deal with them. Now, we would have to hire them if we were gonna have it demolished during an emergency hearing like we do in any other house. We just typically wouldn't do something that big, and that's why it's a very expensive thing. We don't have that money in our budget, per se, we would have to appropriate funds to do that, but I'm not ready to pull that trigger yet until we've exhausted all the legal remedies. So I guess that's the best answer I can give you right now. And you feel free to call my office anytime and we can give you updates, but lately, not much has changed over the last few weeks.
Yeah, they haven't anything.
Yeah, they're, they're done, they've pulled out, they're, they've left. Okay? Yes?
Did you say someone's dumping millings there at the site?
Yeah, millstone.
They're continuing to do that?
No, no. When they did that 19th Street from Locust to Cool, they dumped.
I thought we could stop that if that was ongoing, but...
No, but we probably need to go check that fence out, too, because they've abandoned the fence, we can probably reset that, too. I haven't been up there recently, just been too busy, but we can probably reset that fence.
Thank you.
And the other thing was, when we had that storm, all the bunch of material blew across 19th Street, it's still laying out there.
Okay, well, we'll send somebody tomorrow to get that. I wasn't aware of that. Yeah, we'll take care of that. Yep. But feel free to check in, we'll give you an update. That way, we can tell you if something happens, you know where to call.
All right.
Okay? Okay. That's all I got.
Oh, thank you. Reports from city officials?
I have none.
Reports from Board of Public Works and Safety?
I have none.
Reports from standing committees?
I have none.
Non-standing committees?
I have none.
Items previously tabled?
There are none.
Tax abatements for confirmation?
Resolution 9/2023 designating an area commonly identified as 3701 North Root Ridge, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year personal property tax abatement. Ampaset Corporation, this is for confirmation.
Petitioner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, members of the council. I am Jeff Lewellen with the Wilkinson Law Firm here in Terre Haute, appearing on behalf of petitioner Ampaset Corporation. We are seeking your final action confirming Resolution 9 for a 10-year personal property tax abatement for a project to acquire new manufacturing equipment lines at Ampaset that would bring with it 12 new positions, but also bring this facility up to a modern level of operation and production, which will keep it going for many years to come and retain the current 165 positions that exist with an approximate $12 million payroll currently. I laid out the entire project last week. We have filed our petition, our application, our SB 1, and our guideline scoring criteria, which led to a 10-year abatement. I know you have a long agenda, I'll speak more or answer any questions that you have, but otherwise, we would respectfully request your passage of Resolution 9.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on Resolution 9/2023? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation?
If there's no discussion, I move for confirmation of Resolution 9/2023.
Second.
It has been moved by councilperson Nation, seconded by councilperson Loudermilk, that we confirm Resolution 9/2023. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that is confirmed. Next item, please.
Resolution 10/2023 designating an area commonly identified as 3701 North Root Ridge, Terre Haute, Indiana, as an economic revitalization area for the purpose of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Ampaset Corporation, this is for confirmation, you have a proposed amendment to the final action before you.
Petitioner?
Thank you again, Mr. President, members of the council, Jeff Lewellen with the Wilkinson Law Firm on behalf of the petitioner Ampaset Corporation. This is what I'll call the sister application for a 10-year real property tax abatement relative to the manufacturing equipment expansion that we just talked about, that will bring about new production in need for additional improvements for the existing real property structures, and we have a project of approximately $5 million planned for additional real property improvements. And again, we would respectfully request your adoption of Resolution 10.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on Resolution 10/2023? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Loudermilk?
And for those that might not have realized, what the amendment is, is the scale for the deduction percentage was the same as the personal property and not the same as normally the state, and I caught it at the end of the meeting. So Mr. Lewellen corrected that to the right scale. So that's all he's doing, is amending the percentage scale, the 10-year percentage scale.
Yes, thank you. Councilperson Loudermilk, I meant to indicate that this is amended, and it is, the personal property was not, it was correct. This one, Ms. Loudermilk pointed out that we had the 10-year increment scale as opposed to the current, which starts out at 100%, then 95%, a little, ends up at 5%, so a little different scale. She pointed that out, and so I have made that amendment. Thank you.
With that, Mr. President, if there's no other questions, I'll make a motion to amend Resolution 10/2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by councilperson Loudermilk, seconded by councilperson Oller, that we amend Resolution 10/2023. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, it is amended.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Loudermilk?
If there's no other questions, I make a motion that we confirm Resolution 10/2023 as amended.
Second.
It has been moved by councilperson Loudermilk, seconded by councilperson Oller, that we approve Resolution 10/2023 as amended. Those in favor?
Confirm.
Aye. Opposed? All right, it's passed. Thank you all very much. Thank you. Did you, did you hear that? I didn't hear it. I think that was my fault partly. George, sorry. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 33/2023 vacating a north-south public alley commonly bound by Elizabeth Street to the north, 17th Street to the east, Carl Avenue to the south, and then 16th Street and Lafayette Avenue to the west.
Petitioner?
Yes, I was here last meeting, and we're here in hopes to vacate an alley. Runs right in front of my business, hasn't been maintained by the city in 15-plus years or better. I've done a lot of work to it, but I have all the neighbors on board, we are all in favor of this, and it's mainly for the safety of my patrons, and that's the two main things I can tell you about that. It's for the safety, and all my neighbors are there with me, and they all want this done.
Thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 33/2023? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation?
I visited this property last week, I shared with you some photos and some thoughts about it. The short answer is that I think that this is the wrong venue for, to address your concerns. I don't think that we need to vacate this alley to address the safety concerns. I think that the Board of Public Works and Safety could close the alley for the whole month of October, if need be. And my main concern with, with the proposed vacation are two things. First, there is a, there are two garages in the middle of the block, both of which have garage doors facing this alley. Those, the owners of those properties, right now, may not care about that or realize that, but if we close this alley, then we're setting up future owners of these substantial garages for not being able to access the doors that face the now public alley. That's a problem for me. The other issue that I see is the presence of utilities. There are cable lines, there are telephone lines running through those alleys supplying power to the seven houses that are on either side of this alley. The utilities also serve Shattered Nightmares, the place where the petitioner owns. I think that, again, I think that the way that the alley is now, it's just been blocked by a pile of brush and some concrete blocks and some other things to keep people from driving north through it, even though it is still a public alley. I'm not suggesting that those things be moved right now, I'm just saying that the way that the neighbors are working together to limit access is keeping the alley from being, from behaving like a public alley already. Now, I think that you have a copy of my letter, it has some photos in it. If you have any questions about what I'm trying to communicate, I'll be happy to try to answer them. I yield.
Okay. I also, we are aware of the utility companies, they're more than welcome to come through. The alley will not ever be permanently blocked by either end. It's more of, and they can access still, Mr. Thompson's property can get through there if they need be. I talked to Mrs. Coker a while back, and the alleys, they never get to the back, it's never accessed, they don't need it, but if need be, they still can get through there. Nothing will permanently ever block these alleys. It's mainly to not allow public access all the time coming through there and protect the safety of my patrons, and it's just all, our neighbors are on board for this, and it's something they want, just as much as I do.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation?
There's one more thing that I mentioned last time. Usually, when we're asked to vacate an alley, there's one owner, they own both parts of the alley, they own the property on either side, and it's a pretty cut-and-dry thing. You can see that if that property, or when that property changes hands, the former alley will just become part of the new owner's land. In this case, with seven houses on either side of the alley, spread over four different owners, when something changes hands, someone could decide to put up a fence, someone could decide to also, to materially change the way the alley is because we would, if we vacate it, because we will be giving them control of the alley. To say that nothing, that it will never be blocked or changed in the future, there's nothing in this, in this legislation in front of us that implies that those kinds of agreements are in place. I'm not saying they couldn't be, but to me, we're supposed to be looking out for the long-term interest of the city, and I don't think that this is a responsible response to this request, to, that vacating it would be.
Councilperson Elliott?
Yeah, I, I went up to the plate this morning to look at that. Seemed like about 40 yards in from the north, there were three or four concrete blocks across the alley.
I think them's been there for quite a long time, Mrs. Coker.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time.
Very long time, because...
Okay, so that tells me there hadn't been any activity.
No, and I've worked for the street department for, since 2012, and nothing ever drove even through there.
You can't drive through that.
Yeah.
Nobody's driven through that if it's been there a long time, I guess, is what my observation is.
It's such a small little spot, it goes into the T of Carl, and if my patrons coming out of it, I worry about them turning there and there and there, but...
You're saying they're going around it?
No. They don't, they don't even access through it, they, you know, mine just go out the sides where they need to go.
So where at on this, on this alley, is there a safety issue for your...
For mine, the alley actually runs straight in front of the door on Elizabeth, maybe 15, 20 foot in front. So when they're all parked all in my land I own, they'll walk across that alley to get to the front door of my business. It's a weird, how it's set up, it's a very weird, because the bakery used to be there, they've had problems in the past.
So what building is your, is your business in?
Here's a map, you wanna, I printed off, you wanna show?
Can I?
Yes.
Okay, building. You wanna show, I printed this off early off the dip, you wanna show, Councilman Elliott?
This would be the best way to show. All right. Right there, an alley that just never went through here. I own all that, I maintain all this all the way to here, and there's a door here, there's an entrance right here, and the alley comes out right about here, so the entrance right here, and they come down through here, and there's nothing, really, there's trees, everything blocked.
Okay, and you're saying there's traffic on this?
No, there's, nobody ever came through here. A lot of the people, even the trash is picked up on the streets, nothing goes down the alley.
Okay.
And they're always welcome to the three utility companies, too, they're, we already
Councilperson Loudermilk?
I just want to clarify, and really, there's only two sets of other owners, correct?
Yeah, there's not four. To my knowledge, there's Mrs. Coker and Gary Thompson.
Yeah.
And Gary, I told Gary, he don't have to even put that in, your property ownership can still go up into your property. He owns the two on the side, and the Cokers own these on the side, and I'm there all the way back, almost two-thirds of it. And Mrs. Coker is the one that's really adamant about it, so she, they all access through the front, even the grandma, her garage door's through the, off 17th. They all get over here through 17th, and nobody's ever been through that alley, as far as I can tell, ever known, but...
Do those garages, I didn't look, on their side, have doors on the other side that they come through?
Yeah, her alley, to get her garage, 17th comes in. Mr. Thompson, there is one property on the west side, the garage door accesses Carl. Then over here, there's a garage there that's been condemned, but they're still welcome to access to get to his two property. He owns three or so.
Yeah, on that.
And Mrs. Coker owns the rest, and she has that temporary blockade there. But any utility company be more than wel, we, they can get down there, I mean, other than some overgrown trees, but that's what I already mentioned to them, and they're okay with that, too. As far as I know, there is only total of three owners, me, Miss Coker, and Gary Thompson in Beverly.
Sorry, I misread the list of names. There are, it does look like there are three sets of owners, yeah.
I can see where you get confused, because I think the Cokers has the grandma, the son Terry, the firefighter, and then the mother, Rosetta.
Councilperson Azar?
I just look back on a lot of these that we have done in the past, and there's been, at times, we've had some neighbors that have, you know, voiced concerns, and maybe there were one or two out of 20, and we decided not to vacate. Right now, we've got an alley where everybody's willing to do it, so I kind of, I don't understand why we wouldn't just go ahead and allow it, since...
I take very well proud of that property. I've had compliments from all the older ladies coming up telling me, "I'm glad you own it. You not just run a business here, in the off-season, you cut your grass, you keep it clean, you painted the building, and matched everything." It's a lot of hard work, but I do take pride in that building and around that property and the people there, and that's why it's important that we all are on agreement with this, and it's mainly about the safety. It really is, honestly, that's no more than I can say about that.
Since I've heard that everybody, it seems to be in favor of it, then I would have no problem voting for it. I yield.
I appreciate all for listening.
Councilperson Loudermilk?
If I could ask, can I ask our city engineer?
Yes.
Step up here real quick. Since she's in the audience.
You look like you wanted to come up.
Hi, Marcus, how are you tonight?
I'm doing all right, how about yourself?
I'm assuming, and I apologize, I didn't have that part, the engineer and police and fire have all signed off on...
Yes, we've signed off.
And you don't have any?
We have no concerns, and one thing I would note about the utilities, there's a little line on the vacation forms that all the utilities that are in place do retain easements upon vacation of the alley, so they would continue to have the right to stay there and maintain their lines.
Kind of like the ones behind my house in Tarrytown.
Yeah.
Somebody have to tear down their fence if they have to get in there.
New utilities would be required to purchase easements, but existing utilities may remain.
Okay, thank you.
President?
Councilperson Azar?
There's no further questions, I move to adopt special ordinance 33 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by councilperson Azar, seconded by councilperson Loudermilk, that we adopt special ordinance 33/2023.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, vote, please.
Councilperson Oller?
Yes.
Councilperson Azar?
Yes.
Councilperson Bowland?
No.
Councilperson Elliott?
Yes.
Councilperson Loudermilk?
Yes.
Councilperson Nation?
No.
Councilperson DeBon?
Yes.
That's five yes, two no.
All right, with that, the ordinance passes. Thank you very much, thank you guys for your time. Next item, please, Michelle.
Preparation 12/2023, $1,000, I'm sorry, $1,215 from Edit #04040096 to demo of unsafe buildings, #0404009603432018. As a reminder, all appropriations will need a motion to take action tonight.
Can we make one motion to take action on all of them, or not?
Just a reminder, appropriation 13 and 14 are the budgets.
Okay, never mind. Go ahead.
All right, do we have a petitioner for appropriation 12? Thank you.
President, members of the council, I'm not sure why somebody from redevelopment wasn't here, but this is one of those typical transfers. We get, we receive $1,215 for the demo of a building, goes into the Edit Fund, and then it needs to be transferred over to the line item to be able to be used for further demolition work.
Is there anybody from the public who has any, who would like to speak on appropriation 12/2023? Counsel?
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation?
I move that we take action on appropriation 12/2023. Speaker?
It has been moved by councilperson Nation, seconded by councilperson Elliott, that we take action tonight on appropriation 12/2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, we can take action on that appropriation this evening. Councilperson Nation?
I move for approval of appropriation #12/2023.
Second.
It has been moved by councilperson Nation, seconded by councilperson Azar, that we approve appropriation 12/2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's passed. Next item, please.
Appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three, the Twenty Twenty-Four City of Terre Haute budget.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. Thank you for your time recently, as we went through the budget. I'm just gonna do a quick summary at this point, there's nothing that has changed, we don't have any new updates on revenues or expenses that we've made any changes to the budget. There have been some years that we've made some minor tweaks, but every, the bottom line is still the same on everything. The budget that we've proposed, once again, has revenues projected at one hundred and eleven million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, one hundred and ninety-nine dollars, and our expenses are one hundred and ten million, one oh six, four forty-six. So it's a relatively tight budget, as I mentioned when we went through all the detail, it's mostly just, it's salary increases primarily that are contracted, and then obviously, we would like to do that with city hall employees and non-union employees too, and just other costs going up, there's no big, you know, changes to the budget per se, it's just an increase in cost. Some of our revenues are projected to be down a little bit, most of them are projected to be the same or a little bit more, so it's kind of a wash when it comes to that at the end of the day, so there's no surprises here, I would say. It's a very fundable budget, I would, fair, I'm certain that the DLGF will approve this budget we presented, and would ask you to vote and approve this tonight, and so I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Azar.
I move we take action on appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that tonight we take action on appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we can take action on it this evening.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Azar.
I move we approve appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that we approve appropriation Thirteen, Twenty Twenty-Three. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, next item, please.
Appropriation Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three, the Twenty Twenty-Four City of Terre Haute sanitary budget.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. Just as a reminder, the sanitary budget is strictly debt service, it's property taxes, and all, every penny of that goes to debt service, and so it's a four point, four million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and thirty-three dollars, and pretty simple, straightforward budget. So be happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Would anybody in the public like to speak on appropriation Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Aller.
There's no further questions, I move that we vote to take action on appropriations Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Loudermilk, that tonight we take, take action on appropriation Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three, those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Action can be taken this evening.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Aller.
I move that we approve appropriation Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Aller, seconded by Councilperson Loudermilk, that we approve appropriation Fourteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three, twenty-five thousand dollars from CCI Zero Four Zero One Zero Zero Five Zero to Tree Maintenance Zero Four Zero One Zero Zero Five Zero Zero Three Four Three Two One Nine Zero.
Petitioner.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council, Marcus Meyer with the City Engineers Department. We're asking to transfer twenty-five thousand dollars to tree maintenance. During the storm, we created a lot of extra hazard trees, they've been a burden on the budget, and it has created additional hazard trees, so we have looked into what it would take to finish out the year, continue removing hazardous trees, and that twenty-five thousand dollars should get us there, be happy to answer any questions.
Alright, are there any comments, questions from the public on appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation.
Marcus, is this just for street trees and tree rows, or does it include parks and cemeteries?
This would just be for the street trees and tree rows.
Great, thanks, I yield.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
If there's no other discussion, I'll make a motion that we take action on appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Loudermilk, seconded by Councilperson Nation, that we take action on appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action on it this evening.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Loudermilk.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Loudermilk, seconded by Councilperson Nation, that approve appropriation Fifteen, Twenty Twenty-Three as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, it is a pass, thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Uh, Councilperson Azar.
Since the next three appropriations deal with ARPA funds, I'd like to make a motion that we take action on appropriation Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen. Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Azar, seconded by Councilperson Aller, that this evening we take action on appropriation Sixteen, Seventeen, and Eighteen, Twenty Twenty-Three. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, we can now take action on those three appropriations this evening.
Appropriation Sixteen, Twenty Twenty-Three, five million dollars from ARPA Fund Zero One Nine Nine to Thrive West Central Housing Zero One Nine Nine Zero Zero Six Zero Three Four Three Nine Four Hundred.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. Ryan Keller is here to, you know, he provided a presentation at your last meeting, I know that several of you have had an opportunity to talk with him. County Council has acted upon their portion, and so he's here to answer any questions you may have tonight, so Ryan, if you want to come on up.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mr. President, members of the council, happy to answer any questions, and have open discussion about what we're looking to do here with Thrive West Central for rapid housing development and strategic planning and implementation for the next two years of the ARPA funding.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on appropriation Sixteen, Twenty Twenty-Three? Counsel.
I just
Councilperson Azar.
I just have one question, and I don't know the answer to this. Habitat for Humanity, they had mentioned to me that they had, there was certain guidelines that they had to follow, and it was, it sounded like it might be a little more than what they can handle, is there a certain guideline on each group that you, you are going to represent?
Uh, yes, actu, absolutely, so we did meet with Habitat for Humanity and several other nonprofits and for-profit donors, that's under our current Homes for the Future with this ready ARPA funding, and there are certain guidelines in with that. As we shift over into the city and the county ARPA funding, we'll create new programs with different guidelines that will be more equitable for groups like that to be able to apply and receive funding for developments.
Okay, yeah, because what I had heard was it a little stringent, that they couldn't really meet the requirements to
Yes, it was the, it was the current quantity amount right now, the minimum is ten housing units for that funding source, but as we pivot into this new funding, we're looking at a nonprofit program specifically that will have a lower threshold with that.
Thank you, I'll pass that on.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilperson Loudermilk.
So I just had a question, and maybe this, you have already answered it to other ones, but the committee that was proposed to have, has, that still one committee with city and county combined?
Yes.
And have those decisions been made yet on?
We met today, the commissioners, the mayor, met today to start to talk through what some of those appointments are going to look like. We still have open spots and vacancies with the different appointing bodies, I believe I've reached out to everybody within the reporting bodies, not including the, the city council here tonight, but we're starting to get those appointments to shape up, and we hope by the end of next week, we'll be able to release those names publicly.
And so that'll be brought to the city council to make their appointment, or?
That would be, there'd be, um, yes, it would be nice for the city council to make their appointment as well, sometime within the next week if possible. We would like to give everybody at least three weeks to get their calendars straight, so we can select a date to meet sometime around the very first of November.
Have they contacted you, Curtis?
No.
Okay.
No.
Councilperson Bowland.
So Ryan, can you explain to us, since these appointments are being made for the steering committee, can you explain to us what the function of steering committee will be, once it's all selected, and how they'll move forward with
Sure, absolutely, so the steering committee will be composed of eleven members with different appointments throughout the, the local government, and ranging from commissioners to the mayor, to the councils, to the Terre Haute EDC, as well as the Vigo County School Corporation, and there'll be a variety of business community members, as well as nonprofit members, all within that eleven-person committee. That steering committee will really act as a guide and a vetting process for us, as we set these programs up, to be able to review, make sure we're being inclusive, that we've not left out any potential partners here for housing development, and that we're being equitable with all of our programs and processes going forward in the next two years. So, there'll, there'll be regular meetings, it will be more probably at the beginning, as we really gear up and get each of the programs set in place, and then as the, the money gets assigned out there, appropriated, we will, we'll probably meet a little less frequently, and then just do updates on progress and how things are going.
So the steering committee will move on into, after they've developed what the process is going to look like, then they'll move on into the selection of the different developers, or into whatever the bucket is that you're
Absolutely.
Can you tell us a little bit about that, the different places where you, nonprofit, you said, small developer?
Yes, so currently, we are looking at a few different programs, so something very similar to what we have going right now with Ready Homes for the Future, kind of your mid and your large-scale developer programs in with that. We're looking at a small developer program, we're looking at a nonprofit program, and looking at a rehabber program as well. There will prob, there will also be at a pre-site development program, so we're doing really large-scale, typically, I would say fifty-plus home developments in subdivisions, where we start to look at how do we help do the capital stacking and the financing on that, and those are the core programs that you'll see dollars get appropriated to. On the other side, there'll be educational programs and workshops for builders, lenders, realtors, local government sectors, and then also private sector business people, where we're looking at HR, and where we can really help create that pipeline for their workers in with that, and then lastly, but not least, will be the Club Seven Twenty program that will be kind of positioning in all of those markets to work within our community.
Yeah, thank you, I was wondering if Seven Twenty was still a part of that plan, thank you.
Oh, absolutely, Seven Twenty's gonna play a key role.
Right, I agree, alright, I yield, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation.
Ryan, you've mentioned that, and there's been some discussion, that this council needs to make an appointee to this group. When I read the guidelines on who is to serve, there was something about common practice being to not, or best practice, rather, being to not appoint politicians, elected officials. So this is going to follow on our current president to make this appointment, or is he being asked to, to appoint one of his fellow council members, or is he being asked to appoint somebody from the community?
So, Mr. President, you're able, and Councilman, Councilmember Nation, I appreciate the question. Really, as a best practice, we typically like to see private sector folks on these kind of steering committees that work in that industry. However, it is solely up to your discretion how you would like that appointee, appointee to go, and if you would like to do that appointee yourself, or another member of the council, or a private sector person, it's solely up to you.
You indicated that there are others, that some of these bodies have already made decisions and appointments. Are they appointing politicians?
It appears that that, that will be the trend on some of the appointing bodies, where they could choose to appoint themselves, or appoint another member, that it seems as though they're holding true to appoint somebody within their elected body.
Yeah, that makes sense to me, I'm just trying to get clarity, because there was a little bit of, the way it was written, I could read it either way, honestly.
Yeah, and it's really, you know, really, we're happy to work with anybody and everybody. As we lean on the steering committee for guidance in certain areas, you know, that private sector and professional experience will play a little bit of a role in that, but anything that we bring to the steering committee, we will have vetted through professionals and other groups, all within our community, and then even outside of our community, so it, it will eliminate some of that need to have that subject matter, subject matter expertise in every single area.
On another subject, I appreciate you mentioning the intention to create a rehabber program. Can you talk about, a little bit about that, what it might look like?
It's, it's still really new and kind of raw, we've been working with our consultant out of Fort Wayne over about the last week to develop what that program may look like, but a lot of that really needs to have discussion with the steering committee, and then also some of the other governmental things, like redevelopment commissions, to see how they may want to play a role, since they have an active role typically in giving dilapidated properties over to rehabbers in with that, but it's shaping, it's shaping up to look like it's going to allow them some more flexibility on those, that funding allocation, rather than just the infrastructure piece, where that may not be, need to be replaced, like a water line or a sewer line, when those homes are already in existing areas that may have good infrastructure, so we're looking at what some options might be, and then checking that with our different consultants to see how we can make sure we do that and be very equitable with the funding.
Thanks, you know, I just want to say, I really appreciated the presentation that you gave us last time. I appreciate the work that you've done to try to educate me outside of the meetings on what's going on, what's being proposed. And I personally am convinced that we have a problem, and that this is a good part of the solution, I yield.
Thank you.
Councilperson Elliott.
Ryan, it's, uh, it's pretty important to this council member, and I presume all of our council members, that the process be as squeaky-clean as possible. So how, how do you propose to address the issue of conflict of interest among your steering committee members?
So we'll create a, we, we have, we have kind of standard conflict of interest forms that we'll, we'll create, and have each of our steering committee members sign, and we'll talk about what that looks like, we even have a, a short training that we'll give, we'll give to them kind of on conflict of interest, and making sure that they're transparent when they do have a conflict of interest, but a lot of the steering committee won't be making programmatic awards or decision, that really, none of them will be making programmatic awards and decisions, so when it comes to that kind of review, it will limit them on their abilities to have any real conflict of interest with that. We'll still be using a selection committee that has, that's independent, and really has no conflicts of interest within this community, to be able to make those awards, so that way, we, we have eliminated that kind of risk from our operations.
Thank you, I yield.
I have a couple of quick questions, if nobody else in the council does. I, I thought the presentation was great last month as well, I just wanted to double-check, is that on the city website? It is, okay, I wanted to double-check that. Ryan, the steering committee, do you know if it currently includes, or will include lenders, contractors, realtors, if, if not, do you see the steering committee working closely with that? Any interested parties being from that industry here locally, obviously, I mean, there will be some. But I, I've had some communication from, you know, some realtors who are just wanting to make sure that they are able to kind of follow this process, kind of, if nothing else, have a voice, I guess, so that they are heard, if nothing else. Would you say that the steering committee, that this whole process will allow for those professionals to be heard?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, um, I think that's all I've got. Okay, I yield.
Mr. President, I just wanted to say that the Thrive presentation is under September, and the United Way presentation that's coming up is already online under October.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation.
If there's no further discussion, I move for approval of appropriation Number Sixteen, Twenty Twenty-Three.
Second.
It has been moved by Councilperson Nation, seconded by Councilperson Bowland, that we approve appropriation Sixteen, Twenty Twenty-
we approve appropriation 162023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Appropriation 16 passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Appropriation 172023, $1.5 million from ARPA Fund 0199 to United Way Small Business Support 0199000603439410.
Petitioner.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mayor Duke Bennett. These next two will both be, the presentations will be done by Abby Desborough and Danielle Isbell from the United Way, who we partnered with to help us work through the process, similar to what Thrive's doing on the housing. They will assist us with small business support and not-for-profit support. So I would just remind you, this is the buckets we created. We'll let them go through the detail, and you can ask, you know, kind of like what we did last week, except we're doing it on the same night here. But I feel really good about getting to this point and their ability to help us through this. So let's let them do their presentation, and we'll see what questions you have, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Abby is passing. You guys should have received all of this in an email last week from us, but it's just a formal, a formal presentation of the proposal. So I am Danielle Isbell. This is Abby Desborough. We are the co-executive directors for United Way of Wabash Valley. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present our proposal tonight. And I also want to echo what the mayor said. Thank you so much for your partnership and your work on this. This has been a long, long process to get to where we are, and we are very confident in what we have in front of you this evening. We will be discussing two proposals tonight centered around small business and nonprofit grant programs. We are seeking $2.25 million in ARPA funds related to those. There is a lot of information. I'm sure you noticed that when you received the email and all of the stuff. We are going to try to go through as much of that as possible with the short amount of time that we have. But if there was something in the packet that we don't touch on tonight, please feel free to ask us about it at the end of our presentation. Ooh, I forgot. You got it. Thank you. If you...
No, it's not the TV. Just click. It's not working.
Nope. Oh, there it goes. Thank you. Very briefly, if you're not familiar with United Way, we have been around since 1958. We have a long history of working with and for our community to really create those lasting solutions to our community's greatest challenges. And those greatest challenges have changed over the history of our organization. But the one thing that has not created, or that has not changed, is that we are focused on care and collaboration. We recognize that no one organization can truly do this alone, that we are better together, and we are better united. And so our organization's really been focusing on struggling working families and really helping to create those lasting solutions. So what you will hear from us tonight is nothing new to our organization. We are an open grant funding organization. Any organization can apply for our grant funding, and so it's not foreign to us. It's what we do day in and day out. And so we are very familiar with the processes. Thank you. So how did we get here today? First and foremost, it's that collaboration. It's what I just talked about. Our United Way, along with many local leaders, city leaders, county leaders, are in multiple conversations throughout the community about our nonprofits, and especially post-pandemic, and how they are struggling day-to-day. They have seen an increased need post-pandemic while also experiencing a crippling effect on our fundraising. So a grant process like this is going to help the nonprofits so much. And with our, along with our work with the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce, we're also in multiple conversations about that same effect on our small businesses. They're still struggling to recover economically from the pandemic. So tonight, you are going to hear about two grant programs to support nonprofits and small businesses. Click to the next slide for me. The first one is small business. I will, before I get to these amounts, I will share with you that you are going to see county and city ARPA dollars in our totals. That's because we are pooling those resources together for one big grant program in order to maximize our impact in the community instead of separating those dollars. So for small businesses, I can barely see the screen, it'd be $600,000 in county and $1.5 million from the city. And then for nonprofits, $200,000 from the county and $750,000 from the city, for a total of $2.25 million in request from the city. So Abby, thank you. So Abby is going to go through each one of those specifics for each one of those grant programs. So the first one up is the Small Business Retention and Expansion Grant. We know that many small businesses are still recovering from the pandemic or sustained stalled growth during that time period. So with these funds, the city wants to help small businesses grow, support their business recovery, and increase the overall resiliency of our small businesses. So we're working together to move the community forward. So this program focuses on three pillars of the CU in Terre Haute Plan: economic development, quality of life, and talent attraction and retention. The goals of this grant program include retaining existing businesses and employees, and increasing business revenue and employees in our community. Use of funding could be used for capital, so equipment and technology, use for infrastructure, expansion, facade improvements, major innovations to their small businesses, business planning and technical assistance, also marketing. So we're not looking to just fund a marketing budget, but if it's connected with one of these other aspects, it's something that we could help to drive that business forward and increase their revenue. It's something that will entertain funding. Employer attraction, and also workforce development, increasing skills for workers in our community. Our max grant amounts for this program are $100,000 with a minimum of $10,000 and a two-year implementation timeline. Oh, just kidding. And one of the unique partnerships with this is, like Danielle said, we work really closely with the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. We're all looking to make this community better. And so we will utilize their network of business connections to help spread the word on this program, market it. But also, they'll go out in the community and help small businesses understand the program, work with them side by side in their applications, because grant world is not something that small businesses are typically used to. So just kind of help and guide them along the way. So that'll be a partnership with the Terre Haute Chamber of Commerce. The second program is the nonprofits. With this, the pandemic, like Danielle said, really hit the nonprofit sector hard from multiple directions. Decreased fundraising, because people didn't have the money to spend, we saw an exponential amount of needs increase. And they haven't subsided to pre-COVID pandemic needs versus still just seeing a lot of need in our community across the board. So with this, when things like that happen in nonprofits, the first thing to go is internal costs. We want to keep that money going out in the community, so this is really focusing on capacity building. So how can we make our nonprofits stronger, so if something does happen in the future, we are more prepared, we can better serve our community moving forward. So these are, grants are intended to help build capacity and organizational development so that we are stronger as our community. The goals of this program are to build capacity, organizational development, strengthen organization infrastructure, management and governance, and increase organizational effectiveness. So use of these funds include organizational planning and the technical assistance, strategic planning, fund development, things of that nature, staff development and trainings. So things like conferences, workshops, be able to invest in their staff so that they can more effectively deliver in our community, capital expenditures, infrastructure, and also match for other major grants in our community that will help as they relate to capacity building. Max awards for this are $50,000 with a minimum of 10 and an 18-month implementation timeline. So now we're going to go through the process for all these grant programs, for both of these grant programs. There are two different grant programs that have a very similar process because it's a process that we use internally at United Way from day to day. We have tailored it a little bit to the specific need, but that's the nice thing about our organization is we can tailor our grants to each of those programs. So we're going to go through the project qualification survey and eligibility packet. We're going to go through the full grant application, the review process, and the reporting and grant administration, and then we will end with a proposed timeline. So looking at the project qualification survey, honestly, not all of our grants go through something like this. This might kind of sound like an LOI to you, and that's exactly what it is. It's to make sure that a applicant who is trying to apply for either the small business or nonprofit grant program doesn't go through and spend the time on a full application if they don't qualify for that specific program. And so that, it'll be a very short form, probably utilized Survey Monkey. You do have a sample in your packet of what that could look like. That's not the full final development of that. We will work with a committee that we'll talk about here in a minute that will do that. But there is a sample of what that looked like, very short, just trying to verify eligibility and that their proposed project would meet those needs before actually filling out a full application. The project qualification survey eligibility packet is going to be reviewed by a grant oversight committee. This oversight committee is only verifying eligibility. Those reviewing full grant application process will be talked about in a minute from Abby. But this grant qualification, or this grant oversight committee, is only verifying the eligibility. So that's going to be composed of one appointed member from both council, city, and county by the president, mayor of Terre Haute, Vigo County, one appointed Vigo County Commissioner, United Way Executive Leadership, Chamber Leadership, and Community Impact Committee volunteer that Abby will talk about here in a minute, and that's someone from our team of volunteers at United Way. Again, only verifying eligibility for these applicants, and then the full review process is by another committee that we will talk about in just a minute. So those that are deemed eligible will then go on to the full application. This will be a simple application that focuses on goal alignment, project narrative, a work plan, which we will provide a sample of, and a budget with a narrative, which we'll also provide a sample of. For the full application process, we'll be utilizing our EC Impact, which is a grant management software, to protect applicants and allow for effective review of their applications. After the deadline, all applications will be reviewed by community volunteers. This is a process that we utilize through United Way. No funding decision for our organization is ever made by staff at United Way. So like I said, they're all made by volunteers. These volunteers will be broken up into review teams and will be led by a chair assigned a handful of applications. All reviewers will sign a conflict of interest form to ensure impartial treatment to applicants. Through that review process, we'll have a standard scoring rubric, and the review chairs will compile their team scores and then meet as all the review chairs together to decide final funding based on scores of applications. Scores will, the amount of awards will be based on, the amount of applicants we get, the available funds, and things of that nature. That recommendation will be approved by the United Way Community Impact Committee, which oversees our investments, and the United Way Board of Directors, which is our fiduciary oversight. Once we have awarded, we will see this through all the way to the end. So this is the beauty of having us as a partner. We handle all the grant administration and documentation. This includes a grant agreement for each awardee. We gather all required reporting progress on the grants. We maintain compliance. We process all financial claims, make sure everything is to the standards that they need to be. Every six months, we'll be able to turn that reporting over to you guys. You guys will have a report of how your impact in the community is working with this dollars as well. Before I move on to the timeline, I will, I forgot to say that grant oversight committee that I listed earlier will also help approve the scoring rubric, will help approve the qualification survey, and the full applicant questions, so that we make sure we are all cohesive on what those questions and things should be based on the ARPA recommendations. This is a proposed timeline. It has changed a lot, especially not knowing when we were going to be able to present. And so this is just a proposed timeline. Things could change. The main things that I would like to point out here is that most of the qualification, actually both, we left the QCI on here. I just realized that. That's okay. The QCI column that you see in here was for the county. They specified money for quality childcare. And so that's the last column. You could just ignore that on this one. But for small business and nonprofit, the project qualification survey will open at the end of this year, but full awards will not be made until 2024, in the summer of 2024. We do allow the small businesses a longer timeframe. They are not as used to applying for grants as your nonprofit community, and so we allow more time for that. And we also allow the Chamber of Commerce to have courses and classes to help them along that process. Also different from the small business to the nonprofit timeline is we have added a, kind of a midterm review process for that project qualification survey, so that if a small business filled out a project qualification survey, but their project didn't quite meet requirements, that gives them time to fill out another one and work with the Chamber of Commerce in solidifying a project that does qualify. Again, just supporting our small businesses a little bit more because they're not as used to filling out grant applications as your nonprofits. So in closing, why United Way, like I said at the beginning of our presentation, it all comes down to collaboration. We have really worked hard with the mayor, with the commissioners, to really put forth the best proposal that you have in front of you. Again, this is what we do day in, day out. We will have oversight from start to finish. We are very used to this. Our staff is used to this. Our volunteers are used to this, and this is what we do. So hopefully, we are the trusted local partner, along with our long-term, or our long history of doing this day in and day out. And so we hope that we have your support in this. We will take any questions that you have.
Is there anybody from the public who would like to speak on appropriation 172023? Go ahead. Come up to the podium if you would, please.
I just have a couple of questions. One is, is every nonprofit limited to one application? One grant application per nonprofit organization? And my other question is, all the money that you are requesting, $2.1 million, is all of that to be used to award, or is some of that going to your operational budget? And if it is, like, how much of that money is actually going to be given out?
All of this money that is proposed is going straight into the community, our administration fee for that, and several other.
Okay, okay. And I just, it's kind of weird. I apologize for saying that. I just had this comment that very early in the process, when you are deciding if a business or a nonprofit is eligible in that committee that you have, I just found it kind of, I found it interesting that the mayor is there, because I'm thinking in my head that there would be hundreds of applications, and if the mayor has to, like, kind of help in screening, that could be a lot. I just feel like that.
I promise, we will do the screening. We just wanted to have, you know, oversight by a committee that we will give all the, a full list of everything. So yeah, no, I mean, unless you want to sign up as a volunteer mayor.
That would be a lot.
Thank you. Are there any other comments from the public? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Councilperson Nation.
From the beginning of this process, I advocated for the United Way or the Community Foundation, somebody who allocates money and handles grants day in, day out, to play this role. I'm delighted that the United Way is set up and that our mayor and the county commissioners have worked to get these pieces put in place so that we can take these steps together. Thank you very much. I yield.
Thank you.
Councilperson Bowland.
So will there be a similar process for nonprofits to work through the grant application process that you talked about, the chamber working through the, I mean, I know they're more familiar with doing it, but will there be a similar process?
Yeah. Through United Way grants, we typically hold informational meeting at the beginning of all of our, you know, opening. And so yes, we will still hold a meeting, and we're always available. That would just be a one-on-one with United Way.
Okay. The other question is, I was taking notes when you said what the deadline for the application process will be for, well, I can't read it anyway.
Oh, yeah, but I can't either.
But I mean, just off.
Yeah, so we look at February for the nonprofits is when we would have the project qualification due, and then the deadline for the full applications would be in April, and award in June.
Okay. So someone I heard that, I might have heard it wrong, but the nonprofits could be deemed ineligible just by... ineligible just by not meeting a Survey Monkey result?
No, it's making sure that their project aligns with the use of funding. So it's like a letter of intent. So it's really telling us what they would spend the money on. You know, if somebody comes to us and says that they want to spend it on, you know, programmatic things or a salary for people, like those are ineligible funds. That would be why you would be deemed ineligible.
Okay, and then you could continue to work with them to say, right, they just wouldn't be deemed ineligible. Okay, all right. I yield. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
If there's no further questions, I move for approval of appropriation 17, 2023. Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Azar, seconded by Counselperson Bowlin, that we approve appropriation 17, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
I move we approve appropriation 18, 2023 as presented.
I think it has to be read first.
Oh, you have to read it?
I get it. Just let me read it real quick.
Next item, please.
I read. I know what it says.
Appropriation 18, 2023, $750,000 for ARPA Fund 01992. United Way and nonprofit support. There you go.
Petitioners.
Can you read it like that, George?
Um, petitioners, do you have anything to add to that? Okay, very good. Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on appropriation 18, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
I move we approve appropriation 18, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Azar, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve appropriation 18, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 20 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 19, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinances for City Hall employees. As a reminder, all special ordinances must have a vote to take action.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
To save a little time, I would like to move that we take action on special ordinances 19 through, well, the not all in order.
Well, 337.
337, yeah, 19 to, until special ordinance 37, if that makes sense.
Second, 32.
Oh, um, hang on, yeah. Amy's right. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, 32.
Yeah.
Sorry. Yeah, I just noticed. So we get that. 19 through 32.
Okay.
Second.
Counselperson Azar has made a motion, seconded by Counselperson Loudermilk, that this evening we take action on special ordinance 19 through special ordinance 32, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We can take action on those this evening. Next item, Michelle? I don't think we've read 19, have we? We did, okay. Petitioner?
Counsel? Pleasure to be here. Eddie Felling, city attorney. Since we have so much extra time, since we had so few comments from our normal commentators, I'd like to take a moment and raise some awareness, the dangers of cornfields. I mean this sincerely. Cornfields are big, and kids are small, and you put a small kid in a big cornfield and it's hard to find him. My two-year-old son got lost in a cornfield yesterday, and it was kind of scary, but he was okay. But seriously, be careful with cornfields because they're big. Most of them are big.
When they get older, you want to lose them in a cornfield.
Exactly, there you go.
Are you saying that just to get on the news?
I am, well, yeah. Shout out to Ted Felling. Yeah, anyway.
Shout out to the corn.
Yeah, thank God he didn't stay there.
I feel sorry for Amy.
I do, too. She's married to me. Generally, on the special ordinances, thank you. We are in our third year of our four-year contracts that we negotiated with our collective bargaining units, so there's still one year left after 2024. This upcoming year, across the board, it's 3% increase, 3% wage increase. So with that being said, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. Again, we'll have one more full year before we go back to negotiating again with our eight collective bargaining units, so I'm thankful we have another year that we don't have to negotiate. But again, these were all put together essentially from those, that last round of negotiations that occurred two years ago.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 19, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
If there's no further questions, I'd like to move for approval of special ordinance 19, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Azar, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 19, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 19 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 20, 2023, 2024 salary ordinance for M V H Street Department.
Petitioner?
And I'll just remain silent unless there's any questions moving forward.
Okay. Anyone from the public would like to speak on special ordinance 20, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lautermilch?
If there's no more discussion, I'll make a motion that we approve special ordinance 20, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Lautermilch, seconded by Counselperson Bowlin, that we approve special ordinance 20, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 20 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 21, 2023, 2024 salary ordinance for Transit.
Is there anybody in the public who has, I assume you're going to keep quiet, and okay. Anyone in the public have a question on special ordinance 21, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
If there's no further questions, I move for approval of special ordinance 21, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Azar, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 21, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 21 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 22, 2023, 2024 salary ordinance for Parks Department.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 22, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Bowlin.
I move that we approve special ordinance 22, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Bowlin, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 22, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 22 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 23, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for Cemetery Department.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 23, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Nation.
If there's no discussion, I move for approval of special ordinance 23, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 23, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 23 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 24, 2023, 2024 salary ordinance for wastewater treatment plant.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 24, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Azar.
If there are no further questions, I move for approval of special ordinance 24, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Azar, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 24, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special ordinance 24 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 25, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for police civilian employees.
Would anybody in the public like to speak on special ordinance 25? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Bowlin.
I move that we approve special ordinance 25, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Bowlin, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 25, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 25 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 26, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for the Police Department.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 26, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lautermilch.
If there's no further discussion, I make a motion we approve special ordinance 26, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Lautermilch, seconded by Counselperson Bowlin, that we approve special ordinance 26, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ordinance 26 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 27, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for the Fire Department.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 27, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Bowlin.
I move that we approve special ordinance 27, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Bowlin, seconded by Counselperson Nation, that we approve special ordinance 27, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 27 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 28, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for Mayor.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 28, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lautermilch.
If there's no further discussion, I make a motion we approve special ordinance 28, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Lautermilch, seconded by Counselperson Nation, that we approve special ordinance 28, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Special ordinance 28 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 29, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for City Council.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 29, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Nation.
If there's no discussion, I move for approval of special ordinance 29, 2023.
It has been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Bowlin, that we approve special ordinance 29, 2023. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Me.
Aye.
One opposed?
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Okay, so we have six. It passes with...
You're good.
Yeah, we're good. Passes with six yeses. Next item, please.
I lost track. Special ordinance 30, 2023, the salary ordinance for the city, 2024 salary ordinance for the city court judge.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 30, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Nation.
If there's no discussion, I move for approval of special ordinance number 30, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Nation, seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 30, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 30 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 31, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for the city clerk.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on special ordinance 31, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Lautermilch.
If there's no further discussion, I make a motion we approve special ordinance 31, 2023 as presented.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Lautermilch, seconded by Counselperson Azar, that we approve special ordinance 31, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 31 passes. Next item, please.
Special ordinance 32, 2023, the 2024 salary ordinance for redevelopment.
Is there anybody in the public who would like to speak on special ordinance 32, 2023? Counsel.
Mr. President.
Counselperson Nation.
Before I move for approval, I'd just like to point out to everybody who's paying attention to this that this is the end of a long process. We've had a number of meetings about this. We've talked about it. We've reviewed these. So if it seems like we're just going through the motions, it's not because we're just trying to get it over with, it's because we're at the end of a long process and taking long and taking quick votes.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Counselperson. Thank you.
Me, too. I've been trying to be serious this whole night.
I watched it.
On that note, I move for approval of special ordinance number 32, 2023.
Second.
It has been moved by Counselperson Nation, who was the second?
Me.
Sure. And seconded by Counselperson Lautermilch, that we approve special ordinance 32, 2023 as presented. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 32 passes.
Special ordinance 37, 20, oh, you want to say something? Go ahead. You're done.
Mr. President, I would like to make, I would like to make one observation.
Please do so.
This is the least he's talked in any of his...
Well, I was getting ready to say... I know that was a lot of hard work for you.
Every one of those are 30-page contracts. They're all different.
Thank you.
Michelle, if you could go ahead and read the next item, please.
Special ordinance 37, 2023, rezoning a property located at 1800 South 25th Street. Area planning gave a favorable with conditions recommendation.
Do we have a petitioner on this?
Can we just say in advance, thank you for being patient?
Thank you very much.
This is a tough act to follow. I hope mine's easy, so. Thank you for everything, Counsel.